Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting I would like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and the small screen up by the public gallery. Could you please ensure that your mobile phones are switched off or to silent? And councillors can I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public I would like to say that as a committee we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive but please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and indeed the councillors and we'd ask you to refrain from any booing cheering or other form of disturbance, thank you very much. So we move on to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 17th of May 2017 have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence Amy?
Thank you Chairman, apologies from councillor Forajewski. Thank you Chairman, councillor Henry has declared a non pecuniary interest in item A3 as a member of Uherst Parish Council Planning Committee.
Thank you. Do members have any other non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests? All the hands flew in the air. Councillor Ellis, I saw you first.
Thank you Chairman, the applicant, I beg your pardon, for item A1 is a colleague of mine at Cranley Parish Council but I'm not a member of the planning committee, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
The application again, it's item A2 Exeter House is a member of Cranley Parish Council Committee and also I am a member of Cranley Parish Council Planning Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis, did you wish to amend your declaration?
Yes, I do apologize, I was getting a bit ahead of myself. Yes, it's application A2, thank you.
Thank you. Have there been any questions received from members of the public Amy?
Thank you Chairman, none received.
Are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
Thank you Chairman, there's no updates today, thank you.
Thank you Peter. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 10th of July at a time to be agreed. Now to move on to the planning applications, the first is item A1 erection of detached dwelling, outbuilding and associated works with access from Church Hill, works to retained part of existing building following demolition of the existing buildings at land at the Manor House, Manor Lane, Shamley Green, GU5 OUD. Rebecca would you like to introduce the application to the committee please?
Thank you Chairman. The site is located to the west of Church Hill and to the north of Manor Lane. It comprises a parcel of land which is currently occupied by a number of outbuildings. There is an existing access point to the south with a sloping driveway down into the site. Residential properties surround the site. As members will see from the area of photograph there are a number of trees located within the site and adjacent to the site boundaries. The slide on screen sets out the site constraints. The rural settlement boundary of Shamley Green is shown in black and the conservation area is shown in blue. So as members will see the application site falls within both of these site constraints. The neighbouring property to the south is Grade 2 listed and the Manor House which is located to the south west of the site is a building of local merit. There are currently three outbuildings within the application site and an electricity substation is located to the immediate north east, however this building falls outside of the red application site line. The top photographs show the existing access road which is Manor Lane and this serves the site. The top right looks out onto Church Hill to the east and the top left looks west with the Manor House beyond the entrance gates. The bottom left photograph is taken from Manor Lane looking at the site and shows one of the outbuildings which is located to the front of the site. The bottom right photograph is again taken from Manor Lane looking into the site, the existing driveway slopes down into the site with the outbuildings at the bottom. And just to show some further photographs, these set out the three existing outbuildings on site. Permission is sought for the erection of a detached two-storey dwelling and a garden shed to the rear of the site. As part of the proposal the existing outbuildings to the front and rear of the site would be demolished and the third outbuilding, which I'll just point out here, would be partially demolished. The existing site access would be widened at the entrance, it would be straightened and resurfaced. Space for parking would be provided in this driveway area. The dwelling would be set back into the site on the same build line as the existing outbuilding. The proposed dwelling would be constructed using facing brickwork at ground level, tile hang-in at first floor and it would feature clay roof tiles with conservation roof lights. The dwelling would feature dormer windows in the front and the rear roof slopes, conservation roof lights, a front gable projection and a chimney to the side. The dwelling would benefit from three bedrooms, one would be en suite, these would all be at first floor level with a family bathroom as well. At ground floor level there would be an open plan living room, kitchen and dining room, study and cloakroom. So a garden shed would be erected to the north of the dwelling in the rear garden, this would measure 3.2 metres by 3.7 metres and it would have a height of two and a half metres. It would be timber clad with a pitched felt roof. The proposed dwelling would be set back within the site and on a lower ground level than that of Manor Lane. The dwelling would have a maximum ridge height of 7.1 metres which when seen in the context of the street scene would be at the same height as that of the existing neighbouring property. So as previously mentioned there are several existing trees on site, some of which will be removed as part of the proposal. In total eight would be removed and these are set out on the table on the right as well as outlined and pointed to. They are actually outlined in the red as you can see. The canopy of an existing ash tree which falls outside of the site but extends over the site, that would be cut back. An ivy would be severed from the main stems of two Scot pine trees which would remain and these are represented by the blue dots on the plan. The council's tree officer has been consulted on the proposal and has raised no objections subject to a number of conditions being imposed on any grant of planning permission. Officers consider that the proposed dwelling would constitute limited infilling within a village and when considering the site's location within the rural settlement it is considered that the proposal would comply with policy RD1 of the current development plan and the policies set out under paragraph 89 of the MPPF. Whilst the council can demonstrate a five-year housing supply, the addition of a single unit would make a small contribution to housing supply. The site access road is a private road and does not form part of the public highway. Nevertheless the county highway authority has considered the wider impact on the proposed development and considered that it would not prejudice the safety or free flow of traffic on the adjoining public highway network. Furthermore the proposal would provide for sufficient parking space to accord with the council's parking guidelines. The size, scale, form, design and materials of the proposal are considered to be acceptable and have in regard to advice from the council's heritage and design officer it is considered that the proposal would preserve the character of the conservation area and would not be harmful to the adjacent listed buildings. Taken into account the separation distances to neighbouring properties, the ground levels and positioning of proposed openings to serve the dwelling, it is considered that there would be no material harm to neighbouring residential amenity. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply and highways considerations and the matters of judgment are green belt considerations, design and impact on visual amenity and AGLV, impact on residential amenity, heritage considerations and trees. If I could draw members' attention to the update sheet. Following the drafting of the agenda report the forestry commission has raised no objection to the scheme and officers recommend an additional condition to secure details of boundary treatment should planning permission be granted. In addition to the updates and just to provide a verbal update, we have received a further letter of representation today. Officers consider however that the matters which have been raised in that letter have been fully addressed in the agenda report and therefore officers have no further comments to make. The officer recommendation is as set out on the update sheet, that subject to conditions 1 to 16 and informatives 1 to 7 are set out on pages 36 to 43 of the report plus the additional recommended condition number 17 are set out on the update sheet that permission be granted. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Rebecca. This is a public speaking item and I understand that the procedure has been explained to those of you that wish to speak tonight. May I first invite the objector Stephen Cassar to speak please? Good evening Mr Cassar, you have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Is that, is that, no okay, thank you. Good evening, my name's Stephen Cassar and I live at the Manor House. I represent a number of the people who have objected to this application, a number of whom are here today. There have been twelve objections to the application including the parish council so clearly there is a large local opinion that is opposed to this application. The council's report sets out the objections to this application and the list is a rather long one. However it appears to me and others that the report goes on to dismiss them without proper explanation and justifies its recommendations purely on subjective tests based on judgment alone. Obviously this is not a clear-cut decision. Specifically, this proposed development is within a sacrosanct metropolitan green belt area, a conservation area and an area of great landscape value. It is next to Grade 2 listed buildings with a loss of significant number of trees. This location should be afforded certain protections. Very special circumstances I understand must exist to justify setting aside policies of restraint. New buildings are regarded as inappropriate as per Europol. However these are not explained. What are the exceptional circumstances for this site? Why are the lot of trees being ignored? We are not sure what the land use of this site is, there is no certificate of legal business. Surely an important point and yet this remains unanswered. The property has previously been used for commercial purposes and an injunction was taken out to stop this. What therefore is the current use of this site? There have been numerous prior applications of this site and all have been turned down and one even going to appeal. The described test is whether current proposals have overcome the previous objections. The report does not explain what has changed to alter these decisions or how this is achieved. Previous applications have been refused in part due to road safety concerns and yet the application has no high-low report that has been produced. This I would have thought would have been an essential requirement to reach an informed opinion. I am concerned about traffic safety on this particularly hazardous junction. The council is already able to meet its identified housing needs and therefore this application does nothing to assist in meeting housing needs. As for the standard of accommodation, the report clearly states that Junes 2 and 3 do not meet recommended standards and yet this has been ignored. The proposed building size in our opinion would detract from the character of the area. Therefore in summary it appears there is a strong body of local opinion in opposition to this application and we're all aware of the precedence in ignoring local objections. And whilst the objections are based on sound grounds, the report seems to ride roughshod over these and fails to answer some fundamental issues. Subjective judgements on a number of key items leave room for doubt over the recommendations put forward. We would ask you to consider these representations in the manner they've been put forward. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Cassar. I now invite the agent Sarah Hardwick to speak. Good evening Mrs Hardwick, I know that you know that you have four minutes in which to speak, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Officers have clearly set out the planning issues and other material planning considerations relating to the development in their report and I'm not proposing to reiterate them here and I'm sure you'll be glad to hear that. I just wanted to explain a little of the background to this application. As you are aware Mr Richard supplied in 2002 for a dwelling, not the same size and scale as the one that's before you, it was larger than this and that application was withdrawn because officers had some concerns about the planning issues relating to that scheme. It's been some considerable time since that application was submitted and we now obviously have an adopted local plan 2002. So when we came to look at this scheme afresh, we looked at the constraints first for the site and the first thing was about trees. They were the most important plus the conservation area and the impact on any proposal in relation to the character and appearance together with residential amenity, all concerns that were raised previously. Before any work progressed Mr Richards engaged an arboricultural consultant and that person reviewed the site and provided a report that shaped where potential development may be located subject to some minor tree removal from the site. And it's on that basis that we started. So we didn't impose a design, we looked at the constraints and we then went from there and I believe that approach is different than previously provided in 2002. What we were aiming for was to ensure that we could provide a dwelling here that had the minimum impact on the amenity and character of the area but also provided a good quality scheme as well. So again something that was criticised previously. We engaged in pre-app discussions with officers earlier this year and following that we also engaged in consultation with the neighbours within Old Manor Drive. The neighbours who did respond to us objected in principle to the redevelopment of the site and obviously we're not, given the history, we're not surprised at that. However we can see from the officers' report that this site is located inside the settlement boundary and paragraph 89 of the MPPF does allow for infilling in villages as being appropriate development and therefore very special circumstances are not required to be demonstrated, providing the development is deemed to be of good quality and fits in with the prevailing area. We've carefully considered the design and the sighting and the layout and visual impact on amenities for neighbours. We consider the proposal provides a high-quality new home of traditional materials that reflect those within Old Manor Drive and also in Shamley Green and the wider area and that will not lead to material loss of residential amenity to neighbours. We hope you agree with officers and concede to grant this development. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you Mrs Hardwick. Members I now open it up to you councillor Band.
Thank you Chairman and thank you officers for what is a very detailed report and for organising quite a useful site visit and also to both the speakers who have made some valid points. Clearly both the parish council and local residents are unhappy with this proposal. However it is within the settlement boundary, it is significantly smaller than applications which have previously come forward for the site and we now have the highways no longer objecting but supporting the proposal. Perhaps slightly surprising seeing traffic is now worse than ever when they considered it last and when they objected but never mind, we are where we are in terms of this planning application. So I have some difficulty in finding ways which I think we could object to this sufficiently strongly to sustain an appeal against the decision. So somewhat reluctantly I've come to the conclusion that the officers have got this right and that subject to what others may say, I feel that it would be difficult to as I say sustain a realistic proposal to this proposal. However it doesn't mean I haven't got some comments on what is there. One of the reasons why I think it doesn't unduly impact on the local amenity in the street scene is because although the height, the ridge height of this property is the same as the existing adjacent property at 7.1 metres, it is set further back and so the perception of it will be correspondingly reduced. However to establish this I think we do need to somehow either through an informative or modifying a condition to get the datum right and anchored because all the dimensions on the drawings that I've seen and I'm particularly referring to drawing on the website on PU101A which I think is the proposed block plan which is which you've got on in the report, is dimensioned from the rear boundary basically. And I think rear boundaries particularly on that site are difficult to establish absolutely. I would much prefer to see a datum established at the front whereby no building line should come further forward than the line as is actually shown on that drawing from the adjacent building. There is a small building alongside it and you can see as it's aligned there that the front building line is absolutely along there and I do think that should be the marker which fixes this building rather than the way back. But and that dimension is, although that's a drawing within the plan, it's an undimensioned constraint so I would somehow like that to see that clarified. The other area I've got concerns about are trees. I mean there are some significant specimens left as you can, as the report shows but some of those trees are very tall, fairly spindly and probably will require some further work done on them. And I do think that we need to get a grip of this because without those trees it seems to me there is some danger that at some later stage an occupier wanting to significantly reduce the impact of those tall trees. So I feel that after our tree expert has got together with this, we should be seeking to put tree preservation orders on those remaining significant trees so they are established once and for all because they do, the remaining trees do substantially protect the adjoining properties from the visual aspects of us. Construction and transport is addressed certainly in the conditions and condition 14 but I do think we need to clarify because of the narrowness of the S access road that there should be no parking on the access road for delivery or construction traffic, they should all be parked on the site and I think we ought to be making that clear at the outset. I think the other thing we ought to make clear is if we can, is the size of vehicles delivering materials to this site. There is a habit certainly I've seen in villages recently for builders merchants to produce very long vehicles which are quite unsuitable for some of the roads and that is an area which again I think somehow we need to address if we were going to approve this. I'm interested to hear what others have to say but particular other issues which came to my attention was the substation and the protection and access around it, the front excluded land, what's going to happen to that? It seems to be a bit of an anachronism of the site, we've got a bit of the land in front of the property between the property and the access road which isn't part of the site. What do we need to make some conditions that deal with whatever might appear on that particular piece of land to preserve it without sort of detracting from the proposed plan? And finally I think most importantly, I think if you were to approve it, I do think the contractor and the developer need to enter into meaningful neighbourhood consultation as to what they're up to. So thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor. Officers would you like to respond to any of those points before we move on to other speakers?
Yes, thank you. Thank you Chairman, thank you councillor Band. I'll pick up on a few of the points. The first one related to the land levels and the finished floor levels effectively the building and that is an important point particularly taking the street scene elevation where you can see it with the neighbouring property. And we can apply an additional condition requiring details of finished floor levels and external floor levels to ensure that height of the building is appropriate. In terms of tree protection orders, note that comment and we can take that point away. Obviously we've got the protection during the construction phase and we can raise that with the tree and landscape officer and the test for that is whether it contributes significantly to public visual amenity and you've set out some points where you consider it does so we'll take that point away. With regard to the parking of contractors' vehicles on the highway or on the road leading into the site, we've got specifically on condition 14 for the parking of vehicles of site personnel operatives and visitors. Obviously it's not a public highway so we can't specifically enforce but it will be down to the owners of that road to ensure that's appropriate. But we can ensure there's appropriate provision within the site to accommodate that and for unloading of vehicles but do appreciate there will be an element of disruption because of the narrowness of the highway and the element of construction that brings but that will be for obviously a short period and encouragement with consultation with local residents again, the applicants are here so hopefully they can take that away. I think that picks up on all the points and that, oh and I'm sorry, land on the front of the site, it's understanding it's not within the applicant's ownership so we can't condition the use of that land for anything in specific but if any proposals were going to come forward to something to go on there, it is likely that that would need planning permission but it falls outside of the red edge boundary of the site and I understand the ownership of the applicant as well. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Peter, just to clarify you were recommending an additional condition regarding the levels and what, an advisory regarding tree preservation?
The point regarding, yeah, the condition regarding levels and I think it was a point to take away for officers regarding the TPOs because the advisory could go on there but it's for us to consider whether it's not.
It won't be an additional condition?
It wouldn't be an additional condition, no. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor Band you'd like to come out?
Can I just briefly clarify? My comment wasn't so much on levels but actually the alignment of the property in relation to the access road. I mean the dimensions are all to the building line looking at the plan or all from the rear of the site. What I was talking about is you can see there's the adjacent building, the front of the property is absolutely in line with that existing building and I think that's an important consideration because should the dimensions at the back prove to be that the property comes forward then I think the impact on the adjoining properties will be more significant. I think notwithstanding the dimensions from the back, we should be asking that the front building line comes no further forward than that alignment.
Peter?
Thank you Chairman, apologies I missed that point. The plan before you is a scaled plan so that shows specifically where the building is to be sighted and if a building was constructed in front of that adjacent building, that wouldn't be convincing the development in accordance with the approved detail. So that plan ties the sighting to it so they wouldn't be able to construct it forward. No condition wouldn't really add anything to that because we're approving that plan and that plan's conditioned. Thank you.
Can I just come back again? For example what happens if they produce a dimension from the back of the property and that is a consequence of that which is shown on that plan, it's not just a scaled dimension, it's an actual written dimension on the plan and as a consequence of that the property comes forward. We've seen this time and time again on properties, it's difficult to exactly define at this stage you know where those rear boundaries are. I'd much prefer to see the datum fixed from the front because that's where the impact is on the adjacent properties.
Yes? Well it's a scaled plan and it's been, the site has been surveyed by an architect from that point of view. We have to take that as the plan before us, it might have a written dimension on it, if that turns out to be incorrect ultimately the plan will be incorrect and they can't implement the development they've got shown on that plan. Notwithstanding that if members feel strongly about it, they can set a condition which I wouldn't recommend as an officer but they could set a condition that the building is level with that adjacent structure and that's something that members can consider.
I think that would probably remove any doubt wouldn't it? And you'd be happy with that councillor Band. Would any other members like to comment before we move to the recommendation? Right, so the recommendation. Right, so the recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to sixteen, plus additional conditions regarding levels and sighting, and informatives one to seven as set out on pages thirty-six to forty-three of the report, plus additional condition seventeen as set out on the update sheet. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. We now move on to item A two, which is change of use from office, use class A two, to four dwellings, use class C three, along with alterations to elevations as amended by plans received on the eleventh of the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, the twenty-sixth of the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and the thirty-first of the fifth, two thousand and seventeen, at Exeter House, Tyler's Court, Roland Road, Cranley, G U six eight S A. Rebecca, would you like to introduce this application to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chairman. So the site is located on the eastern side of Roland Road, which lies to the north of Cranley High Street. The site comprises a three-storey building, which is currently used as office space by a financial services firm. The building is set back from the road, I'll just point that out. The surrounding area comprises a mixture of residential and commercial units. The top two photographs show the existing office building with the informal parking arrangements to the front. The bottom left photograph shows Roland Road and the existing access to the site, and the bottom right photograph shows the neighbouring building to the south, which is York House, and the rear of retail units along the high street. That's the area there. Permission is sought for the change of use of the existing office building to four residential flats. As part of the proposal, there would be no change to the footprint of the existing building, but there would be external alterations relating to the fenestration. Four parking spaces would be provided within the site to serve the flats, and there would be space for bin storage to the side of the building. The proposed changes to the external appearance of the building will be shown on the next two slides. To the north and west elevations, this would include the provision of a new doorway, which is on the north elevation, the enlargement of a dormer on the west elevation, and provision of Juliet balconies. There would be minimal changes to the south and east, but obviously I've pointed out that the existing chimney would be removed. At present, the building is used as office place over three floors. Internal reconfiguration of rooms would take place to provide for four flats. The areas of these four flats are shown in different colours on screen. Flats one, three and four would be two bedrooms, and flat two would be one bedroomed. As members will see, one of the bedrooms serving flat one, which is in red, would be on the second floor and would be accessed via an internal stairway. The existing windows, which are obscurely glazed at ground and first floor in the east elevations, would remain obscurely glazed as part of the proposal, as would those windows at first full level in the north elevation. A condition has been recommended by officers to secure this should permission be granted. The application site is located within the developed area of Cranley. The southern boundary of the site is adjacent to the Cranley Conservation Area, and there are listed buildings located to the south of the site. Officers consider that the proposal would not result in any harm to visual amenity, and it would preserve the character and appearance of the conservation area. Existing obscured glazing would remain, and the proposed balconies would be Juliet balconies. Having regard to this, officers consider that the proposal would not result in any material harm to neighbouring residential amenity. The parking provision would accord with the council's guidelines, and officers consider that the proposed arrangement would be a visual improvement. Whilst no marketing has taken place of the office space, officers consider that the site has clear similarities with a recent appeal decision for the gatehouse in Cranley. This was for residential redevelopment of an existing commercial site. The inspector concluded as part of that appeal that there was no evidence of either the supply or demand for offices in Cranley, and the offices lacked flexibility and quality. In this instance, it is considered that the proposed residential use of the application site would be a less intensive use than the existing office use. Furthermore, the formal parking arrangement would tidy up the currently unallocated parking arrangement. On balance, officers consider that the proposal would not cause material harm to employment prospects in Cranley, and the residential use would help maintain the vitality and viability of the centre. The matters of principle and technical opinion are therefore the principle of development, housing land supply, flooding, highways considerations and archaeology. The matters of judgment are the lawful use and loss of commercial use, design of visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, impact on the town centre, density and mix of housing, heritage considerations and the standard of accommodation. Officers therefore recommend approval as set out in the agenda report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. This again is a public speaking item. First invite the objector, Ailsa Waters, is she here? No, she's not, okay. So I would like to invite the supporter, Richard Bryant, to speak, please. Good evening, Mr Bryant. Do you have four minutes from when you begin speaking?
Good evening. My name is Richard Bryant, and I'm the owner of Exeter House. The application before you is for a change of use in respect of Exeter House, Tyler's Court, Cranley, from offices to four starter flats. So what is behind this application? I purchased the building, later to be known as Exeter House, in nineteen eighty-five, since when it has been occupied by insurance brokers. Currently, Clear Insurance, who purchased my firm, was in eleven. Clear renewed their five-year lease in November two thousand and sixteen, but can give just four months' notice to vacate. Clear are always on the lookout for acquisitions in this general area, which have good road and rail links to London, where their head office is situated. If that happens, the Cranley operation would be relocated, and I do not want to be in a position where I have an unoccupied building for undoubtedly many months and quite possibly years. There is a demand in Cranley for starter flats, affordable homes, but not office space. There are numerous small serviced office spaces regularly available in Cranley. As a fairly recent example, East Lodge House was leased to Bulldog solicitors until June two thousand and eleven. Bulldog merged with another practice, and East Lodge House was empty for three years. There are a number of recent applications for a change of use from offices to housing which were granted. One, Bully Moors House, and that was with no parking spaces. Two, the old barn, U Hurst Road, now two small cottages, very close to the road, meaning a dangerous entrance into and exit from the two parking spaces. They are situated seven tenths of a mile from the village centre and have a four hundred thousand pound price tag each. Three, offices over the ex HSBC bank premises, now flats. Four, East Lodge House mentioned earlier. The owner secured planning permission not yet used to convert to five apartments under general permitted development, and there are no parking spaces. Five, for a year and a half before I outgrew the space in Dudley House, sorry, outgrew the space and bought Exeter House, my business occupied Dudley House next to Cranley Village Hospital. This building is now occupied as flats with no dedicated parking spaces. There were some objections from neighbours to converting Exeter House, some of which were unfounded, e.g., they assumed the opaque windows overlooking their property would be changed, whereas they will remain. All the other objections have been addressed and accepted by the planners, including the fact that no land belonging to York House is included in the plans. Some neighbours objected to parking when in fact there would be far less vehicles. As the planners know from their site visit in September two thousand and sixteen, there can be days when none of Clear's staff are away and all their cars are jammed into Tyler's Court. With four flats, the residents will tend to be out at work Monday to Friday, meaning Tyler's Court will have just the limited parking of shop employees during weekdays. Exeter House has some very real advantages if converted to housing. One, flats which are truly affordable with prices estimated at between two hundred thousand and two hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds. Two, adequate parking and turning spaces. Three, a quiet village centre location. Four, a hundred and fifty metres from Sainsbury's, no car movement necessary. Five, a hundred and forty metres from the Richard Onslow, they can walk back from the pub. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr Bryant, sorry. Members, I now open it up to you. Councillor Townsend?
Thank you, Chairman. I must admit to be a little bit disappointed with this application. From the point of view of design of the flats, they fail on the standard size. If you look at page sixty-nine of the report, the two-bedroom fat fails. And also on page seventy, we've got then two failures on the size of the bedrooms on unit three and unit four. I'm also concerned about, despite the fact that the opaque glass, which I'm very glad that's being kept, because there were lots of residents that had concerns about that, I am concerned that, I personally do not feel that the opaque glass is something that perhaps should be on a residential property. You know, not for office, it's okay, but for residential, I'm a bit concerned. I don't share the optimism about the four parking spaces, that people won't have more cars than that. Cranley has a very, very high rate of car ownership, and I think that the four spaces will be used. I do accept that there will be less parking during the day from the office staff that's there, but I do think that it will put pressure on parking, which is already a big problem around that area. On Roland Road especially, where Gleeblin School, Cranley Primary School and the nursery school, all are vying for spaces in the morning and in the evenings. I am also disappointed that the building hasn't been advertised as an employment place. I can't really correspond it to the gatehouse and to Bully Moors, because they were both empty and a lot older building. This is a fairly modern building, Exeter House, and it may be more attractive for somebody looking for office space in Cranley, rather than the very old buildings of the gatehouse, which was really in a state of poor repair, and Bully Moors, which again was a building which was occupied for a solicitor's, had lots of small buildings, sorry, small rooms in it, but probably wasn't the open space that, you know, a modern office might need. Whilst I do accept that the concerns of the residents around there regarding the Juliet balconies and the obscure glass which is being kept have been addressed, I must admit to being disappointed with the layout and design and size of these flats. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. I have to say, I share my colleagues' concerns about this particular application, and I'm very concerned. I think it's a disappointing application for us to see. In terms, I think it's an overdevelopment of the site now. I do appreciate that we have an existing building, but the building is there, it's currently used as office accommodation, and to convert it into residential accommodation, I think, shows from the actual design of the flats that this is an overdevelopment. In terms of density, I think, if I may say so, it's of poor design, and I share my colleagues' concerns that obscure windows do not really have a place within living accommodation apart from bathrooms. And this, the need for obscure glazing in this particular application, this site, I think is indicative of the way the whole site fits in with the accommodation around it. Now, it's firmly between the high street, where you have shops on the ground floor with some residential accommodation above, and then you have residential accommodation on the other side. But you have to take into account the huge problems with parking in this particular area. And I'm sorry, I do think that we have to accept that Cranley is perhaps cut off in some ways, there is a higher use of cars, and I do not see people walking a hundred metres, and eighty metres, two hundred metres from the Waverley Borough Council car park in, behind Stockton Square. I think this is a recipe for real problems, the car parking here. We have access to one of the shops on the high street that does not have access for deliveries and collections from the front, but needs to use this rear, rear. I'm sorry, actually, that I didn't ask for a site visit, because I think that people might have understood a little more the concerns. Now, I appreciate that, excuse me, a local estate agent has suggested we need more two-bedroomed accommodation, and that is to be welcomed. However, we know to our horror that Cranley has already got planning permission for a huge number of properties, and I'm presuming that some of those properties could answer that particular need. Excuse me. We also have to, I think, accept that when people are living in those proposed properties, they're going to need to work somewhere. And I think that it's really quite, I'm very sorry, that this has not been marketed as, properly marketed for employment accommodation. And I think that it would be helpful for it to be retained for that manner. I accept that the officers have made an unbalanced decision. My decision at this stage is more than unbalanced. I'm sorry, I don't support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Stennett?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. A very detailed report, thank you, officers. I concur with Mrs Ellis. The local shops along the part of the high street that Tyler's Court backs on to, there are three or four shops there that do rely on that area for their deliveries. They, at the moment, would find it very difficult, and so would the people of Cranley, if delivery vehicles had to park outside of these shops and walk everything in. One of them is a coffee shop, and they have a road, a kind of pedestrianized road, between the shop and their tables and chairs, which sit out there under their umbrellas in the summer. People come and go from the coffee shop and back out with their purchases and sit in the sunshine. Any vehicles going up and down there have to be very, very careful of pedestrians without that area being used by people delivering their items, their goods. There are three or four shops there which rely on Tyler's Court for that service. On the other hand, I think I've made it quite clear that I am very much for small properties in Cranley. One, two and three-bedroom properties are what is needed. And if you see page sixty-three, quite clearly says, the market housing for one, two and three-bedroom houses from the Sma 2015, eighty per cent are one, two and three-bedroom. Certainly Cranley doesn't need any more four-bedroom or five-bedroom properties, so these smaller flats would be perhaps a help in Cranley for people who can't afford the larger affordable properties that are being built at the moment. However, I think they're in the wrong place. I think they're completely in the wrong place, and that those, that Exeter House should stay as offices. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? councillor Dinas.
Thank you. It's probably a question, because there's nothing I disagree, it's been said actually. Looking at the consultations, page fifty-two and fifty-three, and there may be a very logical reason for this, but I don't see anything from Thames Water. And I would imagine for residential properties, it's going to have a considerable increase in water and waste. And I'm just surprised there's no response from them. So I'm just grateful if someone could update me what that was, please. Thank you.
Officers, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. It's a change of use in existing buildings, so there's an existing connection. I appreciate what you're saying, there'll be an increased wastewater, but that coupled with the scale of development wouldn't trigger the consultation with Thames Water, those two factors effectively. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Bayon.
Thank you, Chairman. More disappointed, councillor Ellis didn't actually call the site visit, because I think it might well have been very useful. Yes, as you say, it's a tucked-away site. It doesn't look to be to be a place that people want to take up residence for any substantial period of time, so it would be constant change perhaps, if it were allowed to go ahead. Equally, the obscure glazing will create quite a lot of aversion, I think, to possible purchasers or residents. I have experience of this for a site within Cranley, sorry, within Hazelmeir, where the developer there on a new build was required to put obscure glazing adjacent to the, on the flank, glass windows towards a property, happened to be my son's property, but it's irrelevant in a sense. They didn't do it, because they knew they couldn't sell it. In the end, they went to appeal and change everything, and they actually got the permission not to include obscure glazed windows. But I can't imagine wanting to live behind in a room without any view out of whatever the surrounding properties are. And as councillor Townsend said, the rooms are rather small, and rather a strange shape as well.
Thank you. councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I feel, having read the papers and having to listen to people, that actually a change of use to residential would probably improve the highway problems. We've heard that councillor Stennett, I suspect that an office use is going to produce far more cars and car movements and people working in the place than it will for flats. Having said that, however, I do think we're trying to put a quart into a pint pot. And it seems to me, this Exeter House has three floors, and if we kept it to three flats, where there was a bit more elbow room certainly on the ground and first floor, so that it could be less cramped, it would be improved. So I am unhappy with the application, because I think it's too much on this particular, in this particular building. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm largely in sympathy with the comments that have been made by the local members. I would just like, officers, to give me a little clarity on the way I'm thinking about the change of use, in that we have a short-term view, where it may actually be quite difficult to re-let the property. But as, you know, one of the local members pointed out, there'd been a very considerable number of planning applications granted, and the population of Cranley is about to expand very significantly, and people in those new properties are going to need places to work. So to actually take away places of work when we've got a large influx of people expected in the vicinity is, it seems to me, something we should be worrying about in the longer term. But I'd just like, officers, to confirm to me whether I should be worrying about the long term, or whether I'm constrained to actually just be thinking about the immediate situation, where I can understand it may be difficult to let commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the officers like to respond to that?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll probably reiterate what the MPPF says, just specifically on that point. And it says that councils should not seek to protect employment floor space in the long term if market signals suggest that they're no longer required. So there is that specific policy test under paragraph twenty-two of the MPPF. So it's, we're to take account of market signals at the time with the consideration of the application, but of course you need to be content that you've got a mix of uses within the borough. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Gray, and then councillor Band, and then councillor Ellis would like to come back.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what's been said by my colleagues, but I think it's a very stark building to convert to residential for flats. There's no amenity space here, and it's stuck at the end of a cul-de-sac in that respect, not a particularly attractive building, although we can't really hold that against it, can we? But I think a number of sites that have been converted have been suitable for the conversion of residential. This one seems to be one that has all the marks to be suitable for office accommodation. And office accommodation, you talked about car parking, well, they're more used to parking perhaps in the Waverley Car Park and walking to their place of office than people would do if they were, if they were there on a residential base. I do remember there was a problem with the bin storage, it still seems to be down a corridor there, not particularly attractive place for it. I can't see any bicycle storage, I don't know whether that's a requirement, but certainly is quite popular in Cranley and the areas around. There just doesn't seem to be the amenities with all the other things. I'm not minded to go with the officer's recommendation in this case.
Thank you. councillor Band.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I agree with much of what has been said already, but just to summarise, I mean, I feel too that this is trying to squeeze a quart into a pint pot. I remember some years ago, we were looking at a house in Victoria Road, where exactly the same sort of thing happened. You know, it wasn't a change of use, but it was converting a residence into flats. And we had concerns about trying to squeeze too many small flats into the building. And I think this applies here exactly the same way. If you've got three floors, three flats would seem to be the solution. Trying to get four into there, I think, is really overdoing it. I think the other point is, I really don't think the change of use, the need for the change of use has really been demonstrated. I mean, there's no real evidence that there isn't a use for an office building in this area. It suggests that the market is flat, but it's not, doesn't seem to me, evidence hasn't been presented to test that. And I think the estate agent's comments about the demand for small properties is well-taken, but I think should really be addressed to the other developers which are active in the Cranley area at this particular time. So I also am minded not to go with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. councillor Ellis, you wish to come back?
Thank you for allowing me to come back. I was actually going to ask that very question of the officers, whether, for the change of use, whether we would need to have evidence that it had been properly marketed. I believe in the past that we have required evidence. We have none, as far as I can see in this case, and I don't think it has been suggested by the applicant that they have in fact marketed it. It looks to me as though they're actually just totally dependent on the observations from a local estate agent. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can move on to, did you wish to come back, Peter, on that at all? No? Okay, right, I think we can move to the recommendation. Which is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to eleven and informatives one to eight, as set out on pages seventy-four to seventy-eight of the report. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please?
None, Mr Chairman.
Okay, and those against?
That's yours, Mr Chairman.
So there's no abstention. So, thank you, members, the recommendation to grant is rejected, so would somebody like to propose an alternative recommendation, please? I'm looking at you two local members.
Thank you. I propose that the application is refused. Thank you.
Yes? Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, I will second that.
Right, so now we need to look to reasons for refusal then, please. Can I have some suggestions, and then the officers can chime in and tidy them up? Thank you. councillor Ellis, councillor Stennett, sorry.
I think immediately, the lack of advertising would spring to mind.
Thank you, councillor Townsend.
Loss of employment land, perhaps lack of amenity space, design, overdevelopment of the site.
Officers.
And car parking as well.
And, well, I think we meet the car parking standards, so that's a difficult one to refuse something on. But, officers, would you like to comment on those reasons?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, well, it's been debated, we've put some wording together. We think there's two reasons we can have there. The first one relating to the amenity of future occupants, I'll read that out. The proposal, as a result of the number and size of units, together with the need for obscure glazing, would result in unacceptable living conditions for future occupants, and would therefore conflict with policies D1 and D4 of the local plan, and paragraph seventeen of the MPPF. And then the second one relating to the loss of the employment use. The applicant has failed to demonstrate that the property has been adequately marketed so as to demonstrate there was no longer a need for employment floor space in the locality. The proposal therefore conflicts with paragraph twenty-two of the MPPF. I'll just add, there was a point that was brought up in terms of what hadn't been insisted on upfront, and the local plan policy doesn't actually cover the A2 use, which we're considering in terms of loss of floor space, employment floor space. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Members, are you content with those? Jolly good. So the revised recommendation is that permission be refused, subject to those, for the reasons just read out by Peter. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse?
That's yours, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, members, the recommendation to refuse is agreed. So we move on now to item A3, which is outline application for the erection of twenty dwellings with associated works following demolition of existing stables, as amended by plans and documents received on the twenty-second of August two thousand and sixteen, plans received on the fourth of the fourth two thousand and seventeen, and an additional ecological assessment dated twenty-first of December two thousand and sixteen, at land south of Cranley Road and west of Gadbridge Lane Newhurst. Tim, I understand that you're presenting this application to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'm going to start by running through the update sheet first. So, members will note the update sheet to the report. Firstly regarding the section one oh six contributions, following the amended number and mixed dwellings, they have been amended in accordance with that. Further, officers have outlined the comments from Newhurst Parish Council in full within the update sheet, along with officers' response to those. And the further four additional letters of objection were received, which officers have summarised and responded to. I will not go through the detail, but I wanted to draw attention to that and its content. So, members, the application was deferred at the October two thousand and sixteen Planning Committee to allow further ecological work to be undertaken. This was undertaken, and further, the application was amended, to gain a better mix of dwellings on the site, subsequently taking the number of dwellings up from eighteen to twenty. So starting with the site location. The site measures naught point eight four hectares, and is located on the north side of Cranley Road, at the junction with Gadbridge Lane in Newhurst. The site is currently used as paddock and is undeveloped, with a single stable building adjacent to the east boundary. The site is bounded by some detached residential dwellings of various designs and scales, as well as open fields to the south and south-west. This is now a photograph of the site. Clearly shows its undeveloped nature and relationship to its surroundings. Some key features for the site include the tree belt along the southern boundary, here, and the hedgerow along the northern boundary, up here. There's a grey two-listed building adjacent to the site, which is to the southeast here, known as Gadbridge Farm. This slide shows the, this has been taken from the two thousand and two Local Plan Proposals Map, which shows the extent of the policy RD1 defined settlement boundary of Newhurst in black. This provides members with a wider picture of where the site is located in relation to the wider village. To the note, on this slide also shows a conservation area outlined in blue to the east, but that just helps you put it in context fully with the site in relation to the village. This is the coloured site plan. The application is an outline application for up to twenty dwellings, with all matters reserved except access and layout. This slide shows proposed site layout for twenty dwellings. The mix of dwellings is as follows: four one-bedroom dwellings, four two-bedroom dwellings, seven three-bedroom dwellings, and five four-bedroom dwellings, which includes seven of these for affordable housing. The affordable housing has been outlined as the dwellings with the blue dot on them on this slide. The affordable housing, which would include three one-bedroom dwellings, as a terrace of three houses, two two-bedroom dwellings, and two three-bedroom dwellings. Access is proposed via a new vehicle and pedestrian access from Cranley Road along the north, which would provide access for eighteen of the dwellings. Another access would be formed on the Gadbridge Lane to the east, over here, which would serve plots nineteen and twenty only. As can be seen from the site layout, three internal roads would be formed to serve the dwellings. The layout takes the form of having a frontage to both Cranley Road and Gadbridge Lane, with some dwellings being positioned in a backland position facing inwards within the site. The finished surface detail for the roads will be subject of a reserve matter. Each dwelling would have allocated on-site vehicle parking, and a children's play area would be sited at the southern end of the site away from Cranley Road. Members, although matters for determination or access and layout, the applicant has provided indicative elevations for each of the proposed dwelling for the site, which match that of the site layout, of the roof plans shown on the site layout. And the indicative design would be of traditional form, with a variety of dwelling designs throughout. So plots one and two to five, these are open-market three-bedroom dwellings, these are shown Plot six to eight, nine to ten, six to eight, the terrace of one-bed affordable dwellings, and nine and ten, affordable two-bedroom dwellings. Plots eleven, twelve, and fourteen and fifteen are both affordable and market dwellings. Plot sixteen is a four-bed dwelling design. Plot seventeen and eighteen are further four-bed dwellings designs. And plots nineteen and twenty, which would front Gadbridge Lane. Note, you can just about see, outlined in red behind it, was the previous indicative design for these two dwellings. The applicant had amended these following discussions with the council's Historic Buildings Officer, having regard to the setting of the grey two-listed building to the south. So here's some indicative street scenes. The top street scene shows the dwellings that would front Cranley Road. Note, the two existing dwellings to the west and east of the site are being marked on for reference, so there's two neighbouring properties here and here. The main access to the site of Cranley Road would be here, between these two properties. Sorry, this street scene on the southern side is internal, looking west within the site, because this is some of the, you could say, backland housing that was proposed. You have the main road here, Cranley Road, and again, neighbouring property on the northern side of Cranley Road. This indicative street scene shows plots nineteen and twenty. On the left is Gadbridge Farm, that's the grey two-listed building, and on the right is neighbouring property known as Sunset Cottage, with the main property here and its garaging here. This is the proposed drainage layout. Due to the lack of an adjacent water course or ditch network, and that the soil is clay, soil across the site, it is proposed discharge surface water drainage to existing public sewer network system. There are two discharge points proposed, one to the There are two discharge points proposed, one to the north at Cranley Road and one to the east on Gadbridge Lane, both into the existing sewer network. This will be undertaken at controlled rate at no greater than the existing greenfield runoff rate. Holding tanks would be constructed within the site underground which would hold the water and use of hydrop breaks and the pipework to control the discharge rate off-site. Both the lead local authority in terms of water have not raised objection. Turn some site photographs, there was a committee site visit held before the October Planning Committee. Just run through some of these now. What you can see here is the site from within. This is looking in a northwesterly direction across the site. You have this hedgerow at the front here which fronts Cranley Road. This is a neighbouring property to the west of the site. And just from the same position looking directly north, you can just see a roof there of a dwelling that's on the northern side of Cranley Road. Looking outside the site and the character of the area, this is standing near the junction of Cranley Road and Gadbridge Lane looking north. Just to show you some of the street scenes here. This is located to the north of the site looking east. On the left-hand side is some of the two-storey dwellings that are opposite the site to the north. This shows the existing hedgerow along the front of Cranley Road where the new access proposed would punch through. A number of off-site highway works are provided, are proposed to cure by condition as recommended by the Highway Authority which include the formation of a new pavement linking up to the existing pavement network on the southern side of Cranley Road. Further, they're proposing to move the bus stop from the junction with Gadbridge Lane further beyond down here providing, again, pedestrian access from the site to that. This is taken on Cranley Road, this is the junction with Gadbridge Lane. Again, this is just looking west on this road. This is where the pavement would be coming in here. The existing bus stop is here but it would be moved over here. This is Gadbridge Lane, it's a smaller road. On the right-hand side beyond this hedgerow line here is the site. What's done here Members is I've shown a picture of the neighbouring properties with the arrow showing which one it is in relation to the site. So the one you saw in my first site photograph was the side elevation of this property. So you can see that there. Sunset Cottage to the east of the site is there. And that's the grey two-listed building to the south of the site there. And this is an example of a two-storey dwelling within the street from Cranley Road just opposite the junction with Gadbridge Lane. So Members, in terms of determining issues with this application, I'll draw your members' attentions to matters of judgment on the right-hand side. Location of development, it is considered that the site is a relatively sustainable location providing good access to the amenities within the village. Further, the site is easily accessible to bus services which can allow people to access other facilities and services in other settlements. The site surroundings consist of largely residential development. Overall, the site is considered to be in a relatively sustainable location for new housing. Countryside visual impact and landscape, the site is undeveloped and forms part of the natural landscape in the area. The proposal will result in a substantial change to this character. However, the site is not subject to specific landscape designations such as AGLV or AONB and as it fronts two roads, it is considered that the residential development would contribute towards the character of the village. The harm to the designated countryside is a matter of judgment to be weighed in advance of the benefits of the scheme. Residential amenity, as you can see from my site photographs and site layout, it is adjoined by several neighbouring properties. Whilst the proposed development would be visible from neighbouring properties and would clearly alter views from those properties, the proposed site layout is not considered to result in material harm to neighbouring amenity and result in an acceptable form of development. The final scale, appearance and position of windows would be determined under any future reserve matters application. The setting of listed building, the nearest proposed plots 19 and 20 have been amended following discussions with the council's Historic Buildings Officer to ensure that the setting of the listed building would not be harmed. This however does remain a matter of judgment for the council this evening. Overall, and having regard to additional representations and comments from the parish council, officers' recommendation remains as set out within the agenda. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Tim. Once again, this is a public speaking item and may I first invite the objector Adrian Benson to speak. Good evening Mr Benson, you have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Benson and I'm speaking on behalf of several of the local residents in opposition to this application. The parish council will cover many of the important planning considerations in the time that they have permitted and to avoid repetition, I will concentrate on looking at two items: the impact on listed buildings and the loss of amenity. Firstly, looking at the impact on the listed buildings. Despite the site being immediately adjacent to the listed Gadbridge Farm on Gadbridge Lane, no formal analysis of the impact upon its setting is offered by the applicant. This is a historic farmhouse and to fully understand its significance, it should be both the principal building along this stretch of lane and not perceived as part of a residential development. Those were the views of the council's conservation officer when consulted on the first iteration of this application, which was to a smaller footprint. He concluded that less than substantial harm would be caused to the setting of the listed building. Members will be aware of the recent appeal decisions on planning weight that is now carried to that conclusion. It is simply inconceivable that the amendments made to the layouts have reversed these conclusions. I would point out that the maximum height of the two large houses proposed on Gadbridge Lane remain unchanged. So moving to loss of amenity. This site has a high amenity value to the community for its rural character and being highly visible to the public viewpoints along both Gadbridge Lane and Cranley Road. The urbanising impact on the development upon the countryside and village setting would be harmful and contrary to policy C2 of the Waverley Local Plan and paragraph 17 of the NPPF. I would point out that no visual impact assessment is provided. I've already mentioned Gadbridge Farm but in addition, the impact of the application on the other surrounding properties, Sunset Cottage and Windy Ridge, is also severe. Account has not been taken of the gradient of the land. The site is at a higher level than all three adjoining properties and indeed to the road fronts. This leads to an excessive overbearing situation and loss of amenity with this type of development that is being proposed and it being unnecessarily close in proximity to the boundary. In conclusion, as the parish council will point out, this proposal is in direct conflict with recent appeal decisions regarding density, impact on the village setting, character of the countryside, public and private amenity and the setting of a listed building. It is also in conflict with the emerging neighbourhood plan and has received widespread opposition within the community, 228 objections. I ask you to take these important points into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr Benson. Excellent timing as well, one second left, that's good. May I now invite the parish council representative councillor Ian Davis to speak. Good evening councillor Davis, you also have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you. My name is Ian Davis, I'm a Newhurst Parish councillor and vice-chair of our planning committee. I have three points to make. Firstly, our neighbourhood plan. Newhurst and Ellins Green Parish Council has now accepted formal responsibility for the provision of its full local plan housing allocation through its neighbourhood plan process, which is well advanced. However, this application is in conflict with no less than 13 of the site selection and development criteria supported by 95% of the local community in our January 2017 resident consultation. The application has received over 220 objections. Should members decide in favour of planning consent on this site for this development at this time, it would be a kick in the teeth for our community and all those who are working so hard with Waverley to deliver the neighbourhood plan in the true spirit of localism. Secondly, previous appeal decisions. In creating a predominantly built-up frontage to the east side of Gadbridge Lane, the proposal would have a serious adverse impact on the rural setting of Newhurst and the countryside protection policies. This is a direct quote from planning inspector Simon Gibbs when he dismissed the 1990 appeal on this site for one house. Those policy concepts and weight still apply in today's NPPF context. The 2015 Penlan appeal in Newhurst was dismissed. It is 100 metres from this site. Key to her decision, inspector Gibbons noted that although development was not on the road frontage, it would be visible between gaps in the houses along Cranley Road causing concerns of urbanisation and of failure to reinforce the informal and rural appearance of Cranley Road. Tonight's proposal is significantly more prominent. It is on the road frontage and the impact upon the character of the village will be one of great harm. That inspector also found no justification for a density of 22 dwellings per hectare. At 24 dwellings per hectare, the current proposal exceeds this advice from the inspectorate. In March this year, the backward point development in the village was allowed at appeal and at an identical density. However, the inspector was able to justify that decision because the site was in a backland location visually well-contained and not prominent from other vantage points. None of these comments are true of this application. The prevailing density of development within the village settlement boundary is 11 dwellings per hectare and a development of more than twice this intensity is clearly out of character at a gateway to the village and at a transition position from the rural village character to open countryside. Thirdly, five-year housing land supply. The council currently has a proven five-year housing land supply according to its April 1st 2017 statement. The Supreme Court ruling of May this year tells us that restrictive policies for development, in this case harm to the character and appearance of the countryside, remain relevant considerations and their weight is not reduced. Members must therefore look at these proposals with this in mind and reach a decision based on the harmful impacts balanced by the true merits without the increased weight attached to housing provision since in this case it is surplus to the proven need of the borough. To sum up, this proposal is in direct conflict with recent appeal decisions regarding density, impact upon the village setting, character of the countryside and the setting of a listed building. It runs counter to the emerging neighbourhood plan and has received over 200 objections and undermines the borough's emerging local plan and recent statement on five-year housing land supply. The only advantage presented is housing numbers but this is surplus to the proven five-year supply and carries little weight in the final assessment. I ask you to take these important points into your consideration of the planning balance this evening and refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis. I now invite the agent Jesse Chapman to speak. Good evening Mr Chapman, you also have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you Members of the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak in favour of the proposal this evening. I am pleased that your officers have noted the merits of the proposal and have recommended this outline application for approval. The application is submitted following detailed discussions with officers and has also benefited from public consultation of local residents. The applicants have worked hard with this council as well as actively seeking the views of local residents and the parish council and as I said earlier, we are pleased that the application has been recommended for approval. Whilst the officers' report clearly sets out the merits of the application, I would briefly like to run through some points. The site is located within countryside beyond the greenbelt, not metropolitan greenbelt. Countryside beyond the greenbelt is a local designation and as Members are aware, it has been demonstrated through a number of appeals and planning applications within this borough that whilst a site may be located within countryside beyond the greenbelt and outside of a settlement, this should not be viewed as a reason to prevent sustainable development coming forward. The site adjoins the settlement area of Newhurst on two sides and is within a sustainable location. The site is not subject to any special landscape designations. The proposal has evolved through detailed discussions of officers and this includes changes recommended by your officers to better reflect the latest strategic housing availability assessment for both market and affordable housing. Meetings have also taken place with the council's Historic Buildings Officers to ensure that there would be no demonstrable harm with regard to any heritage assets. There has been no objection from any statutory consultees relating to and including trees, landscapes, highways, drainage, ecology, archaeology, design and layout or any other matters. 35% of the proposed homes will be affordable and the applicants will be making a financial contribution of some £80,000 towards the Newhurst Church of England Infant School and the Cranley Church of England Primary School. The applicants will also provide financial contributions toward refues and recycling. The site comes forward at a time when it is questionable whether the council has a five-year housing land supply and whereby the elogium plan cites a need for sites to come forward which are outside of settlement boundaries. Within the emerging local plan, which is due to go before the planning inspector later this month, Newhurst itself is currently cited as requiring to provide 65 new homes. Here it is worth mentioning that the national planning policy framework sets out a clear presumption in support of sustainable development which should not be inhibited but be allowed to come forward when available. The comments of the parish council have been noted and it should be noted the parish council still does not have a neighbourhood plan. The parish cites its resident consultation of 2017. However, with no actual documentation which has been properly assessed to ensure compliance with the NPPF, it is difficult to see how weight can be afforded to such consultation. The comments of the 200-plus local objections has been noted and these local objections include those from Aberdeen, Dublin and Cardiff. I would also like to make reference to the recently allowed appeal decision at backward point which I'm sure you are aware of. Here, I would like you to have noted the inspector's assessment of the NPPF, the relevant policies, emerging policies and other planning documentation and the many similarities between that development and this which is before you. The application for you has been recommended by your officers and I would urge you to support the recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr Chapman. Members, I opened it up to you but I'm very mindful of the time. We've got the Central Committee and members of the public waging outside so whilst we obviously will give this application the full weight that it deserves especially for the people of Newhurst, I would ask all members to keep their comments relatively brief and not repeat what's been said before. Thank you councillor Henry.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you for your introduction Tim and a very well put-together report. Your photos weren't so good though, not from where I was sat. So I won't go through what I got down as my preamble. But at that October meeting when the application was deferred for an ecology survey, some members of the committee did come out to a site visit. So since that time, the applicant has amended the initial application and as local member, I have to say that these additions have caused confusion amongst the local people. This is a significant application for the village in a very prominent position and the fact that some 230-odd people have lodged comments against this application is a clear indicator that I, as the local member, must in a very short space of time convey some of the village's concerns here. So moving on quickly down to business, I have three areas of concern. The access are off Cranley Road. Cranly Road, density and amenity. The proposed access to 18 new homes, which features on page 82 of the report, I consider would have a significant impact on the street scene of Cranly Road. Cranly Road is the gateway in and out of the village, it's a B-road and the main road, as I say, in and out of Cranly. For those of you, though, who are less familiar with this stretch of road, it has two distinct The area to be proposed for development is very much rural and the opposite side of the road is very much developed. And as you can see from page 82, the black and white there, the proposed access is on the side of the least developed. This is of rural in character, no pavement, high natural hedging without any breaks, whilst on the other side of the road, the village side, so to speak, it has a pavement, a variety of cultivated and developed curtilage, very few high hedges and more of an open aspect. The proposed development lies on the side of the road which has fields, green spaces and eventually goes down into the conservation area. The proposed changes I consider would have a significant impact on this part of the village and to achieve the desired access, the native hedging and height would go. Moving on to density, we have to compare the visuals on 81 and 82 and I believe they speak for themselves. The visual impact is great, 23.8 dph. Amenity. We're back on page 82. I consider that the Sunset Cottage at the top of Gadbridge Lane is going to suffer substantial harm, substantial harm to this dwelling's occupants and this is significant and I believe the changes will be life-changing. As you can guess from my tone of voice, I'm not happy and I do not wish to support the application as it is. The officers consider this a good residential development for the site, but of course this is a question of judgement. I leave it to my fellow councillors to debate this matter further if they feel inclined. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you councillor Henry. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to just ask the officers a question before I go on to my actual general points, if I may. On page 97 of the report, the comments from the Surrey Wildlife Trust, I did look at the application and I couldn't find where this was actually taken from. Could I ask officers if this is taken from the email of the 13th of February 2017 from the Surrey Wildlife Trust? Thank you. Well, in which case, I'm a little bit confused as to why parts of the email have been left out. It doesn't seem to include the bit where the Surrey Wildlife Trust emphatically say the proposed development will result in loss of suitable dormouse habitat, that paragraph there. It also says the proposed development will result in the loss of a significant length of mature hedgerow, et cetera, that paragraph there. And then, we therefore recommend that the landscaping and building design plans of the site are reviewed to increase biodiversity mitigation and enhancement provision prior to determination of this application. And I wondered where that was as well, because I couldn't see it within the officer's report and I couldn't see where the mitigation had been carried out. It may well be in there, but I couldn't see where it was and I would like that question answering. And if I may, then come back with some other points, Mr Chairman.
Certainly. Officers, would you like to comment? Tim?
Thank you, chairman. In light of their comments, we have recommended a condition to capture it, so the landscaping would be secured under reserved matters and we have recommended condition 23 and 24, 156 and 157. So we have sought to secure those enhancements through those conditions there. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend, you wish to come back?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would need obviously to read through those to see whether or not it was a mitigation. Surrey Wildlife Trust do actually say that the current scheme therefore appears to result in a net loss of biodiversity and in the actual heading to the email, it does actually refer just to 18 dwellings, so now this is actually 20 dwellings, which does bring me on to some other points. The design in front of us has a rear parking court. Now, I know that this isn't something that has been a matter of great debate amongst members when they were deciding applications within Cranly and it's also recognised that rear parking courts are areas which can result in antisocial behaviour. And to be honest, I'm really disappointed that the developers have included this in the plan and haven't had parking outside each of the houses. I'm disappointed with the size of the gardens for the actual affordable housing, especially the ones along the frontage of the road, and I just feel that it's a really cramped site and a missed opportunity perhaps to do a really beautiful design on what is an absolutely outstanding site. It does rise up, so therefore this will be very visual from the road and it is part of a ribbon development along that road. If you look on the actual map, if you could look at the map where it shows the outline there, you'll see that it is actually ribbon development along the Cranly Road there and so therefore it can't be really compared to the Backwood Point application, which was, as was said, contained more within the village. This does expand out on the edge there. I was disappointed to see there was no secondary contribution, secondary school contribution in the section 106. And obviously with the five-year housing supply, policy C2 does carry more weight, as the officers state on page 147. And I have to ask myself, does this proposal preserve or enhance the character of U-Hurst, as was asked by the inspector previously when they were considering the application for Pendlan? And I don't think it does, I really don't think it does. I think it's a real missed opportunity. It's got a greater mass and overall scale in comparison to the majority of the other housing around there and I think that it just appears to be a race to the bottom. You know, the neighbourhood plan is trying to bring forward, I know that it will have limited weight because of the stage it's at, but it's trying to bring forward a locally supported plan and I really, really think it's such a shame when the developers then seem to put in these applications which deny local people the opportunity to have some say in the development of where they live. I think the effect on Sunset Cottage and Windy Ridge will be material, personally I think it will be material and also the impact on the listed building. I'm concerned also about the discharge of the suds. Where are they going? Where are the actual water, where is that going? And also, I don't know where the sewage is going either and I'd quite like to know that because I don't want it really to come to Cranly. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is clearly a matter of judgement as to whether housing here is acceptable or not. And I found very interesting the two appeal decisions that have already been made and how they should be read in the light of this planning application. And I thought actually what the U-Hurst Parish councillor said concerning the appeals was very pertinent. It seems to me, the points made there, that the inspectors have so far said that if it can't be seen, it's probably all right, if it can be seen, it isn't and the density is too high. Now, this can be seen, it can be seen from two roads and I can see it expanding the village of U-Hurst. I feel that having carefully considered the matter and particularly with regard to the appeal decisions that we have, which I think are very relevant to this matter and also taking into account what the local member has to say, at the moment I am afraid I would not be supporting the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Chair. I won't repeat the comments of my colleagues, but I do support what they have said. When you look at that colour site plan, what an awful design. Why do we keep getting designs that are in lines? You know, if you're trying to make something fit into a rural setting, a far better design could be put forward. I want to just mention U-Hurst Parish Council. Whenever I read these papers, the two things I take a lot of note of is what the ward member says and the passion and everything else, but also what the parish council have said. And I think they've done a very thoughtful response, which is helpful when trying to get the local view of this. But mostly my point is what an awful design and why do we have to have houses in lines? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, members. Any more questions before we move to the recommendation? Councillor Byam.
Yes, I have to say this is a dilemma for me. I objected to a number of the applications and we turned them down in U-Hurst before. I didn't like them, I didn't like the access, all sorts of things I didn't like, didn't think were suitable and the inspector did exactly the reverse and said, yes, that's a good idea, let's do that. To me, in a way, this is, it fits in to what you would expect to happen within the approach to a town or a village, development on both sides of the road, moving back towards the entrance. I agree with councillor Dinas and the design and layout are not very attractive, in fact they're very unattractive, but nevertheless, the whole proposal to develop there seems to be a better one. I would love to see, and we of course haven't got the opportunity of seeing, what the neighbourhood plan is saying, because as others have said, I respect very strongly the views of the local design segment and the local neighbourhood plan. So we haven't got access to that, it's not agreed yet, I'm not clear where they're going to be putting their signs, but I'm in a mixed position here, I'm not quite sure which way to vote.
Peter, did you wish to address some of the comments made?
Thank you, chairman. I won't repeat a lot of what Tim has said, but there's a couple of points I just need to pick up on with regard to neighbourhood plan, against councillor Byam's largely picked that up, but as we say, it's difficult because we want to encourage neighbourhood plans coming forward, but we must take the advice of planning practice guidance stating that no weight can be given to basically an unpublished neighbourhood plan, so we can't rely on that in the decision-making, just as a point of clarity. The harm to the countryside is a balance, you know, we've set out our position on that, but what I would add is references made to policy C2 and quite right that greater weight can be given to that now in light of the housing land supply position, however, it's not fully up to date with the NPPF and therefore full weight cannot be given to it and on that basis, you must determine the application on the basis that where the development plan is absent, silent or relevant policies are out of date, you must grant permission unless any adverse impact of doing so would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits. So just want to be clear, that is quite a hard test in terms of the harm that you need to identify to be able to warrant and support a reason for refusal, so I just want to reiterate that with members and we've taken that view in the recommendation. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, are you happy that we move to the recommendation? Jolly good. So the recommendation A is that permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 27 and informatives 1 to 18 as set out on pages 148 to 161 of the report. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant? And those against? Thank you. So may I have a, so the recommendation to grant is rejected, may I have a proposal that the application be refused, please? Councillor Henry seconded, councillor Dinas, and can you give some thoughts to reasons for refusal, please? Councillor Henry, did you wish to...
Off the top of my head, visual impact, landscape, character, residential amenity, significant harm to the listed building, amenity, density. Can you make something of that?
Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I think it's been covered, but it's the actual design, the layout as well. So hopefully that has been covered in what my colleague has said.
It is only an outline application, though. Layout is part, is it? Oh, okay, layout is part, right, okay, that's accepted then, yes, sorry. Officers, did you wish to tidy those up?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Just before I suggest, sorry, just before I suggest some wording around that, I think it's important to give you advice around the harm to the heritage assets because the professional advice from the historic buildings officers is that there isn't harm and we need to rely on their advice. The other matters that are raised are important, but I think it's important that members take account of that before they take forward the reasons. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Townsend.
Can I just ask officers, is there anything that we can have on the loss of biodiversity on the site at all? Loss of habitat?
Thank you, chairman. I don't believe there is because we've got a way of mitigating that impact and we've got two detailed conditions that can deal with that, so if that's appropriate, we shouldn't be relying on a reason for refusal on that basis. Thank you, chairman.
So have we got some reasons for refusal?
Thank you, chairman, sorry. I thought there was another comment to come in, but I would suggest three reasons for refusal, but the two additional ones will be relating to the lack of a legal agreement completed. But the main one of substance which members, we'd suggest to members, the proposal by virtue of the number of dwellings, scale, urbanising impact and harm to the character and appearance of the open field and the character and setting of the village would fail to preserve the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside and that is therefore in conflict with policy C2 of the Waverley Local Plan 2002, paragraph 17 of the NPPF, sorry, and paragraph 17 of the NPPF as reason for refusal one. The second one would be, notwithstanding the objection in principle to the proposal under the reason for refusal one and taking into account the absence of a signed legal agreement, the proposal would fail to provide affordable housing within the meaning of the NPPF appropriate to meet Waverley's housing need. The proposal is therefore contrary to paragraph 50 of the NPPF as the development does not provide a mix of housing based on current and future demographic trends, market trends and need for different groups in the community. And the third one, the applicant has failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement in respect to the required necessary infrastructure contributions to seek to mitigate the effects of the proposal upon infrastructure and we will list those specific ones in terms of education highways. The proposal therefore conflicts with policies D13, D14 of the Waverley Local Plan and paragraph 203 of the NPPF. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, are we happy with those? Jolly good. Okay, so the revised recommendation is that permission be refused due to the reasons that we've just listened to. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to refuse? And those against? Abstention? Thank you, members. The recommendation to refuse is agreed. There are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you very much, members.